September seventeenth council meeting, we're gonna start with a pledge of allegiance if we could.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, a nation for God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, um, Matt, can we get a roll call?
Counselor Savage.
Here.
West.
Here.
Halter.
Here.
Windorf.
Here.
Tate.
Here.
Demus.
Here.
Zadi.
Here.
Chalada.
Here.
Mayor Como.
Here. First off, I would like to recognize Troop Eighty-Six, is that correct? Troop Eighty-Six here, um, to, uh, work on, is it communication? Communication badge? Stand up, let's see who you are. Thanks for coming.
All right.
So, uh, working on your, your badge, uh, when we get down to the petition section of the agenda, if you think it's some really good questions you wanna beat us up on, just come on down to the microphone and we'll, we'll help you out. Everybody's gotta have one good question to get the badge and pass, right? So, with that counsel, uh...
With the pressure on, didn't you?
Exactly. Um, we have the approval of the minutes from the special counsel meeting, uh, of August twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen, and the city council meeting minutes of September third, two thousand nine. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Your honor.
Counsel Chalada.
I move to approve those minutes.
Um, counsel, we do have a motion to approve those minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, this is gonna bring us directly into the bid openings. We have one item, the police vehicles. And for police vehicles, we have three bidders. The first will be Laramie Peak Motors out of Wheatland, Wyoming. The second, Thunder Basin Ford out of Gillette, Wyoming. The third, Frontier Ford out of Diamondville. Scouts always have that, aye, right? Don't wanna get anybody in trouble. Billy, Billy has one, Kristen. It's, it's not too sharp.
Like you.
Okay, we do have a bid bond attached. And we have a total bid from Laramie Peak Motors of two hundred and eleven thousand, three sixty-six, twenty. Two eleven, three sixty-six, and twenty cents. Okay, this is gonna be from Thunder Basin Ford. We do have a bid bond attached. Total bid. Hundred ninety-seven thousand, six seventy-four, twenty. One ninety-seven, six seventy-four, twenty. And the third final, oh, the third and final bidder, Frontier Ford out of Diamondville. Bid bond is attached. Total bid. Two hundred and nine thousand, eight oh eight. Two oh nine, eight oh eight. These bids will be turned over to the police department for review and recommendation to the city. This is, um, going to lead us to the appointment section of our agenda, counselors. And the first item, uh, under the appointments, uh, made a change, just for the record, um, based on possible, possible future conflict from, uh, this individual. I've made a change with my appointment, and Mr. President, members of the council, I would submit the name of Matt McBurn- McBurnett to serve first term Joint Powers Fiber Optics Telecom Board.
Counsel, Matt McBurnett has stepped up to be on the Joint Powers Fiber Optics Telecommunications Board. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please. Counselor West.
Yes.
Halter.
Yes.
Windorf.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
Demus.
Yes.
Zadi.
Yes.
Chalada.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Mayor Como.
Yes.
Mayor Como, you have your appointment.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Item number two, Mr. President, members of the council, I submit the name of the honorable Tim Savage to serve second term Sweetwater County Tripartite Board.
Counsel, we have Tim Savage serving second term on Sweetwater County Tripartite Board. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, roll call, please. Counselor Halter.
Yes.
Windorf.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
Demus.
Yes.
Zadi.
Yes.
Chalada.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Mayor Como.
Yes, thank you, I appreciate, I know that probably seems weird for you, uh, but I appreciate your willingness to serve again.
It's my favorite board. Mayor, you have your appointment.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. And, um, this is gonna bring us right into the presentations and proclamations, uh, portion of our agenda. And item number one, I'm honored to mention, have with us here tonight, um, Harry Holler. Uh, haven't seen him for quite some time, and, uh, he has, uh, the need to, uh, say a word, Terry?
Ladies and gentlemen, my pleasure to be here tonight. After hundred days in a hospital, the pleasure to be above ground anyway. Um, I brought my daughter Ashley here to help me tonight, and, uh, let me first say, um, outside of military people, there's a couple other professions that I place real close, a real close second, and that's policemen and firemen. And if Ashley, if you'll get those two that underneath the blanket. If the police chief and the fire chief.
Okay, and, uh, Fire Chief Holmesley's, uh, currently out of town, but we have the town chief, uh, Ron Gaddy, and, um, our, um, Chief Inspector Rick Cozad is here also, so come on up. Commander, um, Kessler will be here with, uh, Chief Pacheco. This is quite the honor, and, um, uh, I, I'm just, uh, very impressed over the work that's went into this.
I wrote to, I wrote to Senator Barasso, and they, the, these flags flew over the United States Capitol in Washington DC, and I had them framed and placed them somewhere where your subordinates can all see them. And I'm truly honored to present them to both your departments.
I'm, I'm wondering if we possibly, Harry, could we get a picture of the police department, uh, and, um, uh, yourself and then the fire department, that would be great if we could. Think we should give Mr. Holler a standing ovation, this guy does more work for us. Ashley, uh, thanks for coming to help out. Harry?
There's.
Give us some history on what you've done there.
Pardon me?
Let us know what you've done there, so, what, what was behind this?
What was behind what?
The, the, the intent to have the flags flying, is it just an idea that came to you?
I'm illegali- I'm illegally parked and I set a fire across the street. Anyway, um, well, being redundant, uh, my name's Harry Holler, and back twenty years ago or so, I was reading a newspaper about places like Chicago, New York, and Dallas sending Christmas cards and care packages to our men and women in the military. Fighting a war in the Middle East, thousand, thousand miles away from home, and I thought, now if those people can do that, why can't we? So, it was late in that year, so I knew I had to get moving, and I contacted, uh, a few, uh, a grade school in Green River, and, um, Lori Haster was one of the teachers I contacted in Green River, and, uh, we got a few Christmas cards that first year, and it was a start. And the second year, I, I invited, uh, Rock Springs to join in, and, uh, we, um, I don't know who thought of the plaques and T-shirts, and if you can remember that, far back, we started giving plaques and T-shirts to the local men and women who joined the military at that time. Um, but that was a pretty good idea, too. But, um, I started, I started hitting up Smiths and some of the other places for cookies and candies to start our care package program, and, uh, um, then another idea hit, we must start sending care packages, we're gonna have to have some money to send them. And I worked out at Tentacle, at that time, it was Tentacle, not Sobe, and, uh, I said, um, would you mind helping us, you know, with some money to help send these care packages? And they came across with some money, and I said, you know, the other people, the tracers or whoever I hit up in the other soda ice plant, and they gave me some names, and they came across with some money, and, um, well, I remember a banner year when, um, I seen, I had seen about six or seven pickup trucks loaded to the gills with, uh, uh, care packages pulling in the Green River post office. And all of a sudden, when the, um, when you, when you see, when you send packages overseas, uh, you have to have somebody's name on it, just in case. Um, you know, like, just, somebody gets in trouble, they've gotta have somebody to blame, so they put my name on it. They sent a, sent Holler to jail. So, they put my name on it, and, um, well, I started getting all these, um, citations, and from different units that were getting these care packages. I had all kinds of citations, and after, I didn't know what to do with them. I, I put them on, uh, I, I put them in frames, I knew you had to keep them framed, keep the moisture off the flags, and the citations to keep them from getting moldy and stuff. And then I, what I did is I kept them in my hallway, going upstairs out of the sunlight, so they wouldn't get moldy. So, time passed, and I, like I told you, Mayor, I just did a hundred days in the hospital, and I figured, Holler, maybe you're not gonna last forever. Uh, but what I did is I gave away a lot of these to some family and friends, and I figured, um, it's about time you gave some of these to the people that really, anybody can come up with ideas. I mean, I can come up with ideas that'd get me five to seven real easy, but, um, but, um, we came up, we came up with some ideas that made, made life a little bit easier for some kids that were fighting a war thousands and thousands of miles from home. Um, it wasn't, I can, I can, I mean, this was an idea that we made happen. I mean, everybody climbed on this idea and we made it blossom. We made it happen, and we put smiles on some kids' faces. We made it work. I mean, we can, we, everybody comes up with ideas, but unless everybody comes on board, it's just an idea. But this is an idea that we made happen, and that's why I wanted Rock Springs to have this citation, and this, to hang on the wall somewhere, and it's from the United States Marine Corps. And, uh, I'm, and it, um, from, uh, Camp Al, something or other, Iraq, on the seventeenth day of January, if I're Lord, in two thousand and seven. So, if Rock Springs were to accept this on my behalf, I'd be pleased for them to accept it.
I, we'd be honored to accept that and place it next to our flag with the names on in our council chambers, and, and, um, just honored to have, um, that to be a part of our, our council chambers. Councilman Zadi?
I could as a comment. I, Holler, I was here, uh, council, first started this. Say it was all of us that made this happen. Wouldn't happen out of passion or traction. So I do thank you for everything.
Yeah, well said. You were, uh, you were the driving force, and you brought this, I, I think there's still six of us that were here at that time. You were the driving force and worked diligently, diligently to find the names that are on that plaque, and I'd, I'd like to see that continue, but, um, day in and day out, um, you, you brought this to the city council. We supported you in the effort, and, uh, uh, really, Rob and Zadi's correct, you were the driving force that, that led us in the direction.
And this is for all the kids and everybody in Rock Springs at that time, that brought this all together, and I truly appreciate, um...
It will be an ingrained home, uh, with honor.
Well, thank you all.
Thank you. And if your car's towed, um, no, just kidding. Hopefully it's not towed. Okay, um, next item under our presentation, Southwest Wyoming Regional Airport, Devin Brubaker, Airport Director, Air Service Cooperative Agreement, of which will take action under two thousand, Resolution two thousand nineteen, one thirty-five. Devin?
Mayor Council, uh, once again, uh, thank you for having me. Uh, on your agenda this evening is a MOU, Memorandum of Understanding, between the City of Green River and the City of Rock Springs and Sweetwater County for the two thousand, fiscal year twenty twenty, uh, air service. I used to call it the Air Service Enhancement Program, having to break some old habits now, because it is now the Capacity Purchase Agreement Program. I've been talking about it for quite a while, two thousand eighteen Senate File Forty, uh, was passed in the legislature, and it created, uh, a Air Service Improvement Council that the governor appointed, which I was, uh, honored to be appointed by the governor to serve on, to develop a ten-year plan for air service in Wyoming, primarily for the communities of Rock Springs, Gillette, Sheridan, and Riverton. We met quite a few times throughout the state, uh, we got together, created a, a concept. Uh, we didn't really create a concept, that's probably, uh, not fair to say. We tagged onto a concept that already exists in the airline industry, called a Capacity Purchase Agreement, where we were going to procure capacity, if you will, seats, aircraft from an airline to provide service to all four communities and take advantage of economies of scale, take advantage of bulk purchasing, however you wanna talk about it there. So, we went out on a bid, we did an RFP, we got two proposals, one from SkyWest Airlines, one from Denver Air Connection, and, uh, the selection committee, uh, chose SkyWest Airlines. The, uh, contract negotiating company, or, uh, committee, which I served on, uh, negotiated a, uh, three-year contract with SkyWest Airlines that offered, uh, uh, two options for renewal. The first one would be for three years, and the second one would be for four years, taking it out to a total of a ten-year term. The agreement was signed by YDOT, uh, several months ago, uh, between YDOT and SkyWest Airlines. Uh, subsequently, the county agreed, uh, with, on a, a, uh, MOU with YDOT to take care of the local portion, the forty percent of local. Um, and then subsequently, I'm here today, final approval, the county and the City of Green River have already approved their portion of the MOU to cover the forty percent of local match. A couple of things that have changed is in the past, the contract with the airline was with the county. It is now with YDOT instead of with the county. So, YDOT carries the contract, the county simply has an agreement with YDOT to reimburse them the costs. Part of the MOU with the, uh, with the state that the county signed requires us to decrease our cost per in plane passenger by ten percent year over year, um, to prove that we're doing better and better, which we have done phenomenal, we've been able to do that every year for five years, four and a half, five years, so we should be good there. Um, it includes a third daily flight starting next summer, which we'll be formally announcing all the details of that, uh, here pretty soon when it goes for sale. Um, it also required that a single point of contact be designated by all three entities, uh, and so far, the other two entities have designated, designated myself as a point of contact. It requires YDOT to work with the community to make appropriate decisions regarding fees, uh, or fares, schedules, and frequency of flights. Um, it requires YDOT to invoice the county for forty percent of the cost, and it allows us to be involved in the annual negotiation. Our total minimum revenue guarantee, it's still a minimum revenue guarantee, is reduced this year by three hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. What that means to the City of Rock Springs is a savings of forty-eight thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars compared to the total price tag for fiscal year nineteen, um, and that is equal to thirty-three, uh, percent. The local portion, City of Rock Springs covers thirty-three percent, county forty-five percent, and City of Green River twenty-two percent. So I'm trying to be quick. I know there's some people in the audience that are trying to get to a benefit concert tonight. So I'd be happy to answer any questions about that topic. I do want to invite you all to our open house on Thursday evening from five-thirty to seven at the airline terminal, where we will be unveiling the design for our commercial terminal project, including video fly-throughs and, and several more renderings than what you guys have seen. We'll be revealing that to the public as well as talking about quite a few other exciting things happening at the airport, including a, a significant aeronautical development that is going to be coming into the airport. We're excited about. So that's all I have on the airport. And if I can, Mayor, just want to briefly say, we received word that we received our first grant for the recycling center. We've been applying for grants for a while and we got a seventy-five-hundred dollar grant from the Wyoming Community Foundation to make improvements on the twenty-four-hour drop-off area on the outside of the recycling center. So we're excited about that.
One question, Devin, as far as the designated point of contact, was that something the county and the City of Green River chose to, to vote on as action as part of the contract? What was the process?
They, they just said, you're it. There was no formal process.
Okay, well, I can speak on behalf of the city council that you're it.
All right, think I can handle it.
Yeah, any questions, Council? Great job.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Devin. Next on our presentations is a little bit of history. This individual came to see me a while back after email with a great idea, a great group. Some pretty exciting. Introduce everybody with you and tell us a little bit about My Life and My Fest, what your plans are. Now, I have to, couldn't go through a phone meeting unless I reminded everybody to speak into the microphone, like, you gotta be this far, or everybody at home will then start calling all these people up here and telling them what a pitiful sound system we have. I'm not saying it's not pitiful, but if you could just speak close and let us know who you are and what you're doing.
So, good evening, Mayor Como and members of the council. My name is Kyla Mastis. I apologize, I am not a public speaker. But what I do in our community is I work with at-risk youth through a program that meets monthly called My Life. I'm very passionate about this program because the youth in our community needs someplace to belong, someplace that is safe, and a place that helps them to deal with the things that they face as young youth. Because I think, as we all know, it's a scary world out there for them. I absolutely love what I do, but the best part about my program are these two young ladies that are here with me today. I am the only adult that helps coordinate this program, but it is run and empowered by Youth Voice. So ladies, before I let them share with you about My Life, one thing I do want to say is we have an event that's coming up September twenty-eighth at Bunning Park, and we welcome all of you to join us. I'm sure several of you have received emails from me inviting you to the park and to participate in any capacity that you're interested. We would love to have you. My Fest is a celebration of My Life groups across the state, and this is the first ever Wyoming My Fest. And I hope that you'll join us in making this a great annual contribution to our great state. So ladies, would you please share with them your personal experience for My Life?
Sorry, I'm kind of tall. So my name's Kylie Johnson. Nine months ago, I was put into the Rock Springs Youth Home with other youth in there who were at risk and need help and whatnot. And I was introduced to My Life with Kyla. I didn't really have a choice to go to there. It wasn't something I really wanted to do at first. But I have been attending My Life for about ten months now, and I became an ambassador about a month ago. Now I actually want to go. Like, it is something that I want to do and I want to help people and I want to know that, like, I have support systems out there. Some of the things that we do with My Life is they bring in guest speakers and whatnot, and they just kind of let people know that they have that support out there, especially youth, like the Rock Springs Youth Home and the Green River Youth Home, just to know that there's people out there that have been through what they've been through and to know that they are not alone and that they have those kinds of support systems. Thank you.
I'm short, so. All right, so my name is Social, and I've been practically with the My Life program for almost two years. And my story is kind of like Kylie's too. I was put into a youth home a couple, two years ago, actually, and I wasn't given the choice if I wanted to go or not. And at that time, I was in a really rough patch, and it's not something that I'm proud of. But when I first went to My Life, it was different than most of the support groups that they usually have. It was very welcoming. You know, like, yeah, you did some bad stuff, but hey, it's like Kylie said, you're not alone. And the fact that they bring in guest speakers who've been through all these different stuff, like, at the, like, in different points in their lives, and they explain to you what paths they took and what choices they made to lead them to that, it makes you rethink that whole situation. Like, for me, like, it was bad what I was doing. I was not the best kid out there. And with every guest speaker that came in, my choices changed, and it spawned me into the person I am right now. And I don't think I would be the person I am right now without this program. It's helped me a lot, and I know that it's going to help a lot more youth that has been going through some rough patches in their life. And that's what we want to do. We want to be able to help them out. Like, yes, we are youth and we are going to be, like, helping other youth, you know? But we feel like, since we've been through this, we can help them out too in order to, you know, make them a better, better people and better choices. So that's all. Thank you.
Well, you know, when Kyla first came to see me, I thought this was just such a great idea. We had, we had a long discussion about what an opportunity it is to have a place, a group of individuals that you can go and lean on, especially people that have been there. So we discussed, you know, peer pressures, whether it was bullying. We're coming up tonight with a proclamation to make people aware of the suicide in our community. And we definitely don't want to see it lead to that. So just think about what a great, powerful voice you can be for, for those people that might be following in the same footsteps. I think we had this discussion before, you're all beautiful, we're all different. It doesn't matter who you are, what you do, everybody deserves a second chance. But to have a group that you can lean on, learn from, and vent to and not keep inside, and we, we discussed that before, is just powerful. You guys are doing great things. I'm excited to be, attend the event and see all the people that partake.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you. And with, with that, we have a proclamation to offer on behalf of the city. And this proclamation reads, whereas My Life is free, is a free empowering group for youth ages thirteen to twenty-three who have experience with mental health, substance abuse, foster care, and other challenges, who use their experience to help others to improve the systems that serve youth. And My Life Rock Springs was established in two thousand seventeen when Acceptance and Abilities partnered with Magellan Healthcare in Wyoming to bring Magellan's nationally-recognized youth program to Rock Springs. Since that time, My Life Rock Springs has been meeting monthly with an average of over twenty youth attending each event. And My Life features inspirational speakers, uplifting entertainment, fun activities, free food, and information on a variety of topics important to youth, actively engages youth through teaching, coaching, and mentoring, and helps youth use their voices to inspire and create positive change for themselves and others in the community. And My Life provides a much-needed voice in the community to combat negative views about behavioral health and foster care issues. And My Life benefits youth by helping them build self-confidence, positive social supports and leadership skills. And it also has been beneficial to systems that serve youth by bringing about changes to improve care for youth and young adults. And My Fest is a free music, art, entertainment, and youth empowerment festival designed to inspire and empower young people while sharing information and resources that can help youth and families overcome challenges and achieve their goals and dreams. And Rock Springs is proud to be home to the first Wyoming My Fest set for September twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen, from noon to four P M. at Bunning Park in Rock Springs. And now therefore be it resolved that I Timothy A. Como, Mayor of the City of Rock Springs, do hereby declare the week of September twenty-third through the twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen to be My Life Awareness Week in the City of Rock Springs and encourage all of our citizens to participate in the My Fest event on Sept-, on September twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen. Congratulations. We'll see you there.
Thank you so much.
Okay, this one is a good one coming up. Councilor West might want to pay attention to this next one.
I knew that was coming.
Diaper Awareness Week. Kelly. Kelly Frink is here with United Way, going to tell us a little bit about diaper awareness week, and then we're going to issue a proclamation as well.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, for having us here. National Diaper Need Awareness Week draws attention to the issue of diaper need in the United States. By working together, we can ensure that babies have access to clean diapers and other basic necessities required for them to thrive and reach their full potential. Community members can get involved and be a part of the growing movement of diaper bank leaders, advocates, and individuals, can host a diaper drive, volunteer at the food bank on distribution days, or make a donation to our diaper bank. So some facts about our Sweetwater County Diaper Bank. It's possible because we have a partnership with the Food Bank of Sweetwater County. And so in two thousand eighteen, we were just shy of distributing about sixty thousand diapers. And so far this year, we're distributing over six thousand diapers a month. So we're looking at a twenty-two percent increase from last year. But last year was down just slightly from the year before, so I'm not sure what the increase was for.
Sixty thousand? I had twin girls.
So you went through that many? Are you taking notes? It's like ten diapers a day. Families that are experiencing diaper need, on average, they fall short about nineteen diapers a month. And so the diaper bank helps these families cover what they're falling short of. So it doesn't provide all the diapers for the month, but helps like the food bank does to help them give over that gap that they have of diaper need. So. Any questions about the diaper bank?
It's just good that there's, there's events and, and options such as, such as this.
Yeah, there's not other assistance for diapers. You can't buy them through SNAP or anything, so.
Questions? With that, we have a proclamation, whereas diaper need, the condition of not having a sufficient supply of clean diapers to ensure that infants and toddlers are clean, healthy, and dry can adversely affect the health and welfare of infants, toddlers, and their families. And national surveys report that one in three mothers experience diaper need at some time while their children are less than three years of age, and forty-eight percent of families delay changing a diaper to extend their supply. And children go through six to twelve diapers each day during the two to three years they wear diapers. And purchasing enough diapers to keep a baby or toddler clean, dry, and healthy can consume fourteen percent of a low-wage family's post-tax income, making it very difficult to obtain a sufficient supply. And the daily and or weekly supply of diapers is generally an eligibility requirement for babies and toddlers to participate in childcare programs and quality early education programs. And without enough diapers, babies and toddlers risk infections and health problems that may require medical attention and may prevent parents from attending work or school, thereby hurting the family's economic prospects and well-being. The people of Rock Springs recognize that addressing diaper need to can lead to economic opportunity for the state's low-income families and can lead to improved health for families and their communities. And Rock Springs is proud to be home to the Southwest Wyoming Community Diaper Bank and recognizes the importance of diapers in helping provide economic stability for families and distribute diapers to less fortunate families through various channels. Now therefore be it resolved that I Timothy A. Como, Mayor of the City of Rock Springs, do hereby declare the week of September twenty-third through the twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen to be Diaper Need Awareness Week in the City of Rock Springs and encourage citizens to donate generously to diaper banks, diaper drives, and those organizations that distribute diapers to families in need to help alleviate diaper needs in Rock.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly, for your work. Appreciate it. Okay, the last item under our presentations and proclamations is Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month. And although we don't have anyone here tonight to accept the proclamation, the City of Rock Springs would like to remind everybody, as we mentioned before, that the awareness of suicide is something that we need to make sure that we continually bring forth and to let those individuals know that maybe dealing with stress in their life, there is options and resources for them. And with that, we have issued a proclamation that reads, whereas September is known throughout the United States, it's National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and is intended to help promote awareness surrounding each of the suicide prevention resources available to us and our community. And our goal is to learn how to help those around us and how to talk about suicide without increasing the risk of harm. And suicide prevention requires a comprehensive, multi-level approach that encompasses strategies for prevention, early intervention, treatment, and post-prevention after death has occurred. And suicidal thoughts can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, income level, religion, or background. And according to the United States Center for Disease Control, each year more than forty-one thousand people die by suicide. As such, it is the tenth-leading cause of death among adults in the U.S. and the second-leading cause of death among people aged ten to twenty-four. And the City of Rock Springs, Wyoming, is no different than any other community in the country, but chooses to publicly state and place its full support behind local educators, mental health professionals, athletic coaches, scout leaders, police officers, and parents as partners in supporting our community simply by being available to one, one another. And every member of our community should understand that throughout life struggles, we all need the occasional reminder that we are all silently fighting our own battles. Now therefore be it resolved that I Timothy A. Como, Mayor of the City of Rock Springs, do hereby declare September two thousand nineteen to be Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month in the City of Rock Springs. And we encourage all residents to take the time to inquire as to the well-being of their family, their friends, and neighbors over the next month, and to genuinely convey their appreciation for their existence by any gesture they deem appropriate. A simple phone call, message, handshake, or hug can go a long way towards helping someone realize that suicide is not the answer. Thank you for your patience. We're going to move on to the public hearing section of our agenda, of which we have one public hearing. A public hearing on a joint grant application with the City of Rock Springs and Sweetwater County for the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Application, two thousand nineteen, for the purpose of obtaining emergency portable radio equipment for the City of Rock Springs. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on this issue? Rock Springs. Is there anyone here wishing to speak, uh, on this issue? Anyone? If not, we're gonna move towards the petition section of our agenda. At this time, I would ask if there are anyone wishing to address the city council on any issue whatsoever. This is your time to do so. You just speak, uh, into the mic and state your name for the record.
My name is Tom James. I'm, uh, coming here to, uh, get an update from you guys regarding the, the land on Blue Sage Way, seeing if you guys have, uh, come to any conclusion or anything like that regarding what we're gonna be doing with that, uh, whether we're gonna put out for bid or lease or how we're gonna handle that situation. As you probably noticed, it's getting a little bit colder outside and neighbors and I are wondering how, what we're gonna be doing, how we're gonna be, what we're gonna be doing with our campers and stuff, so.
I think, uh, uh, what, where we are at this point is the city attorneys provided us three different options of which, um, I believe the council has, uh, reviewed, made comments on. And, uh, I believe the next step is basically to, um, uh, possibly draft some language, vote on one of the options, draft some language in that option, and then move forward with the, uh, recommendation of the city attorney. Any comments or input by the council? I believe, um, the next step is basically to, um, uh, maybe sit down, uh, from some of the discussion that we've had and draft some language to option two, I believe, was the option that everybody seemed to favor.
And that was for the lease, correct?
Correct.
And that was, uh, did you guys have any questions or any clarifications on, or anything for me on anything, on how, anything at all?
No, I think.
I mean.
Oh, go ahead, Councilman Zadi.
Yeah, I'm.
I'm rolling this at you right now. I'm surprised you don't have.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know. I'd have to take a look at it and review what the requirements for, for off-site, off-street, uh, for, is, I know there's some support.
Well, why don't we handle it this way, um, uh, going into our, uh, next week meeting, which would give us a couple of, um, weeks to work on it, is, is to take comment in regarding the lease language that we had discussed, what we wanna see, uh, written in the lease, uh, and, and, uh, have some discussion with, uh, Mr. Cowsich and his department on what's gonna be required from surfacing and bring something forward to the city council at the next meeting that we could, um, we could, uh, review and, and vote on if that's okay. Everybody okay with that? Now, I believe what we also agreed is, uh, and it's funny because during this time, we had another request, but there are several of these that could be, um, um, considered, and, uh, we know they're out there. And I believe it was the general consensus from the council, from what I remember, was that one size doesn't fit all and that we would deal with these, uh, on a case-by-case scenario, correct? So in this case, um, this would be just this case.
Okay.
So, so, Mr. James, I, I believe we're getting close and, um, and working on it. I think we just need to grab some language, hash it out, uh, revise it at the next meeting if, if need be, and then, uh, make a vote on, uh, plan forward.
Okay. Yeah, I was just wanting, making sure, get an update and see if there's any questions along the way. Here to answer any.
Yeah, well, I appreciate your patience. And, um, this is one of those, uh, areas with, uh, dealing with public lands that we wanna do the right thing and make sure that by chance, um, if there's a lease and that leaseholder, um, leaves or whatever, that the city's covered with, with something, go forward. There's a lot of discussion about that.
Well, I agree. I might, much rather do it right the first time than hav- having to come back to it later on and having to, yeah. Do it that way, so.
That'll be our plan. Everybody's okay with that?
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Anyone else wishing to address the council on any issue? Scouts, I believe this is your time for questions. What's going on? Anyone else? Any issue? What time are we going home? Okay, I'm, uh, hearing that. I'm going to close the petition section of our agenda and move on to the officers and staff reports. Counselors, we have the Health Insurance Fund recap for August two thousand nineteen, financial report summary for August two thousand nineteen, and the Rock Springs Renewal Fund Financial Statements for July two thousand nineteen. I'd entertain a motion to approve the officers and staff reports in place on file. We do have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? I'm gonna move us on to the council committee and board reports. We have item number one, the Main Street Board Meeting Minutes of August twelfth, two thousand nineteen, and the Rock Springs Historical Museum Board Meeting Minutes of August fourteenth, two thousand nineteen. And I would ask if there are any other, um, council committee or board reports, um, at this time. Hearing that, I'd entertain a motion to approve the council committee and board reports in place on file.
So moved, Your Honor.
Do we have a motion to approve? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Just gonna bring us to the correspondence. If you've had, uh, time to look at the correspondence, and if there are no questions, I would entertain a motion to approve the correspondence in place on file.
So moved.
Uh, we do have a motion to approve the correspondence. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Just gonna bring us to the bills and claims. Item number one, the bills and claims for September seventeenth, two thousand nineteen.
Your Honor.
Councilwoman Windor.
I move to approve the bills and claims for September seventeenth, twenty nineteen.
We do have a motion to approve the bills and claims for September seventeenth, two thousand nineteen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number two, the salaries for September sixth, two thousand nineteen.
Your Honor.
Councilwoman Windor.
I move to approve the salaries for September sixth, two thousand nineteen.
We do have a motion to approve the salaries for September sixth, two thousand nineteen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Just gonna bring us to the new business items, uh, on our agenda. Item number one, the request from the Rock Springs High School Student Council for road closures for the Homecoming Parade Route on October first, two thousand nineteen, at five P M. Go Tigers. Councilman, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman Shalata?
Move to approve this request. Go Tigers.
We have, uh, motion to approve the request. A second, Go Tigers. Do I have a second on the, uh, request?
Second.
Second called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number two, the request from the Sweetwater Now to use the parking lot located on the south side of five thirty-eight Pilotview Avenue for a Sweetwater Spooktacular Parking Lot Event during the Halloween Stroll on October twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen, from eleven A M. to two P M. Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman Savage?
I move to approve that request.
We have a motion to honor this request. Is there a second?
Second.
Second has been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Item number three, the request from Santa Fe Trail for permission to transfer their liquor license to a caterer to cater a waiting reception on October twelfth, two thousand nineteen, from four P M. to midnight at Expedition Island in Green River. And this would require the approval of the Green River City Council. Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilwoman Windor.
I move to approve that request from Santa Fe.
We do have a motion to approve this request. We have a second.
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And item number four, one, um, change on item number four. The, uh, location for this request is not, uh, Sweetwater Events Complex. It's actually Bunning Hall for the record. Uh, and with that, we have a request from the Wyoming Downs for a Liquor Catering Permit for the Paint the Town Pink Event on October fifth, two thousand nineteen, from five P M. to ten P M. at the Bunning Hall. Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Uh, Councilman West?
Move to approve this request.
We do have a motion to honor this request. Is there a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Just gonna bring us on down to the resolution section of our agenda, of which we have four. Uh, item number one from the Housing Authority Resolution two thousand nineteen dash one thirty-four.
A resolution authorizing Timothy A. Como acting in his capacity as chairman of the Board of the Rock Springs Housing Authority to accept a capital fund program amendment for the fiscal year twenty twenty for the purpose of receiving two hundred eighty-four thousand one hundred eighty-five dollars and authorizing the supervisor of housing and community resources to execute the capital fund program amendment.
Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman Savage?
I move to approve Resolution twenty nineteen dash one thirty-four.
Um, we do have a motion to approve Resolution two thousand nineteen dash one thirty-four. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. Roll call.
Counselor Windor?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Demus?
Yes.
Zadi?
Yes.
Shalata?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Maricomo?
Yes. Yeah, item number two, Resolution two thousand nineteen dash one thirty-five.
A resolution accepting and approving fiscal year twenty twenty Wyoming Commercial Air Service Improvement Plan Cooperative Agreement among Sweetwater County, Wyoming, the City of Green River, Wyoming, and the City of Rock Springs, Wyoming, and authorizing and directing Timothy A. Como as mayor and Matthew L. McBurnett as city clerk to execute the agreement on behalf of the City of Rock Springs.
Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilwoman Windor.
I move to approve Resolution twenty nineteen dash one thirty-five.
Counsel, we do have a motion to approve Resolution two thousand nineteen one thirty-five. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second has been called. Roll call.
Counselor Tate?
Yes.
Demus?
Yes.
Zadi?
Yes.
Shalata?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Windor?
Yes.
Maricomo?
Yes. Devin, thanks for your work on that. Item number three, Resolution two thousand nineteen one thirty-six.
A resolution accepting and approving a contract with Peterbilt of Wyoming in the amount of two hundred five thousand one hundred twenty-five dollars and authorizing Timothy A. Como as mayor and Matthew L. McBurnett as city clerk to execute said contract on behalf of the City of Rock Springs.
Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman Shalata?
Move to approve Resolution twenty nineteen one thirty-six.
We do have a motion to approve Resolution two thousand nineteen one thirty-six. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. Roll call.
Counselor Demus?
Yes.
Zadi?
Yes.
Shalata?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Alter? Windor?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Maricomo?
Yes. Item number four, Resolution two thousand nineteen one thirty-seven.
A resolution authorizing and directing Timothy A. Como as mayor of the City of Rock Springs, Wyoming, and Matthew L. McBurnett as city clerk of the City of Rock Springs, Wyoming, to accept and approve a budget revision to the budget for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Counsel, we do have a motion to approve two thousand nineteen one thirty-seven. Is there a second?
Second.
Second's been called. Roll call.
Counselor Zadi?
Yes.
Shalata?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Windor?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Demus?
Yes.
Maricomo?
Yes. Um, one announcement. Um, there's a revenue committee meeting that we've been tracking some discussion on the optional, municipal tax that seems to be coming up again and again. Um, Matt McBurnett has graciously volunteered to drive the pine tail to sit in for the meeting and keep us up to speed on what's going on there and offer, um, some ideas on what, uh, he sees and reasons why, um, that we feel that, uh, could, uh, could be a, a positive thing and just to see where this goes. If you have any, um, input prior to Matt's departure, feel free to give him a note on that, um, to our lonely drive to Pinedale. I appreciate that. Thanks.
Your Honor.
Uh, Councilman Zadi?
Just a question on that municipal tax and for the public as well. This is one that could be an option for, uh, an additional one percent tax, something we're looking to state for.
Correct. And there's been some pros and some cons. And, you know, uh, Matt and I had a lot of discussion on, you know, that's not, not, uh, wanting to be so heavily dependent on sales tax, um, yet, um, with declining direct distribution coming back from the state, uh, the great senators here might want to, uh, bring this to Cheyenne, is, is we continually get forced into a, a corner of trying to find ways to do the good work of this city, be physically responsible, yet keep up with the needs from this community. And, uh, I think a very, uh, a very apparent situation was, um, recently, uh, when lists were brought forward, six penny tax, um, discussion. Uh, the City of Rock Springs, um, um, tweaked down their list, but by all means, uh, the city could easily have a list of two hundred thousand dollars or two hundred million dollars if needed. I, I mean, it, there's just no end. Um, trying to do more with less is, is not a good idea. Maybe it's a good idea for, uh, the state to consider, uh, uh, the percentages to be, um, differentiated in the, uh, uh, direct distribution of a hundred and five million dollars and what goes into the permanent mineral trust fund, just a one or two percent, uh, more to the cities and towns would go a long way. Uh, Matt, I don't have any input you wanna chime in, uh, but you're, feel free. But that's my thoughts. We don't wanna be heavily dependent on sales tax, but.
Your Honor, I, I was just, when I go to testify, testify before the committee, I was just gonna talk about, uh, being a good tool for our tool peg, something to bring back, discuss with council, whether we wanted to forward that on the ballot. Being that we haven't had a lot of chance to talk about it, we don't know the final details of what that bill will look like, so. I was gonna bring those same ideas about possibly looking at some of the other revenue streams. Also, you know, um, with those items they mentioned, property tax to Darla. So something to look at that hasn't adjusted in quite a while.
Right.
So some of those kind of, I'd welcome. Having, I'll, uh, check my emails all the way up to presentation or the.
To the bottom of fourteen mile hill when you get to more.
All the, that agenda items, I think, at one forty-five, um, so, right after.
Senator James, feel free.
I will also be there tomorrow, and I'm gonna have lots of suggestions for the revenue committee on ways to, um, do things other than tax the people. So.
I think some good, uh, some good sense would be made on really looking into it, um, this year, uh, on how the direct distribution form is, is hashed out. Uh, I think, uh, uh, it's almost voodoo, uh, the way those numbers are put together and based on population and what's fair and what's not fair. But we, um, we, we need to be more realistic and find ways to fund schools and municipalities so they can continue to do the good work that the, uh, the taxpayers, uh, they, they should have. and find ways to fund schools and municipalities so they can continue to do the good work that the taxpayers, they, they should have.
Well, they need to stop looking at the people as a source of revenue as well. So they need to start looking at making cuts instead of upping taxes. So that's one, one of the few things I'm going to be suggesting to them. And so it's, I have a list of, for them. I know Sven Larson came to him last committee and wanted to talk to him. He has a PhD in economics and they never did talk to him. And I know he has a laundry list of suggestions for him. Chairman, vice chairman never did contact him. So that's going to be one question I have for him. So, yeah.
Well, we appreciate your support. By all means, we can't continue going down this path.
It's gonna, it's gonna harm Wyoming if they keep going on this spin, spin, spin streak that they're going. And I'm definitely going to call them out on it. And I'm going to have fun doing it.
Okay, with no further business to come before this governing body, this meeting is adjourned.